Before I open the meeting to the public, I have a statement to read. While we appreciate residents' feedback, the board does not entertain personal matters in a board meeting format. Personal matters are sensitive. As such, the board welcomes your feedback in a private scheduled venue at the main office. Please contact myself, the village clerk, or the village administrator to set up a meeting.
Could you say that a little louder? I really didn't hear you, George.
While we appreciate residents' feedback, the board does not entertain personal matters in a board meeting format. Personal matters are sensitive. As such, the board welcomes your feedback in a private scheduled venue at the main office. Please contact myself, the administrator, or the village clerk to schedule a meeting.
Does that mean that the comments are available to the public? Or does that mean that it is always privy to the board and never reasonably presented to the public?
It probably will be and maybe not, depending on the nature of it.
What's the nature of it?
When you start at personnel, it should be done behind closed doors, not in a public venue.
If something is made, but it's not necessarily to personnel, but it is of interest to the public?
That's not a problem.
Are people that have requested that something be done publicly about it, is that possibly worthwhile to be available to the public? Or is that to be in private or secret or whatever you want to call it?
I believe it would be left to the board.
The board decides if it's public?
And after consultation with the people, whether it should be public or not.
So in other words, you can't make a public comment about any person or issue because the board has to approve it before it goes in public?
No.
In other words, it's managed news, George?
You've got to understand that when you make comments about a person and the person's not here to defend it, it's not fair.
Well, should the person say that I tend to make a comment about a particular organization and I must insist that that person be there in order for me to make the comment?
I said personal.
Sorry, George, I can't hear you.
I said personal, not organization.
I have something to read that has to, that was done publicly, and I think it should be publicly announced.
I would officially like to do this the proper way. My name is Andrew Vinslet, living on 85 Maple Street, and I just want to change the topic a little bit. I know trustee Martin, you're going to be touching on the wine tasting a little bit later on.
Yes, I am.
But I'm speaking on behalf of the center stage. They came to me because they like how I do things, apparently. The wine tasting, it was to their understanding that they were going to have to have a roped off area and police or something along those lines needed to be able to do that. The question they had was the farmer's market at the library doesn't have to.
They shouldn't be doing the same.
Okay, that was one thing.
They're not tasting wine.
They are, they're getting free samples.
If they're getting samples of wine, they're not doing that.
There's two wine vendors and they both are doing it, so.
I will check on that situation.
That was just one thing. All right.
That's good for one as good girl.
Okay, and if I take up too much time, just looking overboard.
No, go ahead.
Another thing is the steel sign. I know the sign is coming in pretty soon for right up front here. And Ray's Supplies, that big steel sign that they have there, they on the corner, I don't know what it is, that one-way street in Ray's, they're willing to donate that sign to Ross's Point as long as somebody from Ross's Point can take it out free of charge. Okay, so I don't know if you can do that, Brian, or if the board can consider that, but that's fifteen, twenty feet up in the air. You won't need the whole sign, but it's a free steel sign and that may work. That's going to save us a lot of money. And again, the jewelry sales, I'll wait till you talk about that. They were just wondering whether or not. And the last thing for the stage is the coin drop. We don't want to step on the fire department's toes whatsoever. It's a good thing to have and everything, but in the past I had to speak, I was asked by the center stage if they could do a coin drop. And Carol looked into it and said, nobody from the village is allowed to do so for our insurance and all that stuff. It's unsafe. And I said, is that including the fire department? And she said, yes. So that meant no coin drops whatsoever. And you know, if you're going to allow one group to do it and not another, we're just wondering where you're going with that. But that's just something for you guys to think about. And then for personal notes, when I was walking out here, three of the vendors told me that they aren't going to come back next year for definite. For example, like the horses on kids night, they said they spent more money on their own food than they did on rides. The bouncy house wasn't set up till four thirty at night. And the other three vendors, which was the food one that was here, the one that was right across D and D's, and the one that was doing the blankets and stuff, they all said that they're not coming back. So I don't know if we want to try to get that committee going or a little bit more publicity because a lot of people remember when, this whole parking lot, nobody could park in it, you know? But that's all I got. You took enough time. Thank you, board.
No, thank you, ma'am.
Well, I know Ben Arnold, 104 State Street, I know the Sons of Legion is not putting a booth down here next year either.
So that's four.
Just to let you know.
That's four, going on five possibly.
Right, I'm Shirley Hall from Main Street, and I have a letter, and it's concerning partially my neighborhood watch group. And this resulted as a neighborhood watch group contacted me on June sixteenth, 2015, at approximately twelve noon. Gordon, Bob, and I were enjoying coffee cheese and a snack and a friendly conversation in the Lakeside Coffee Shop. Scott Beshard, in a uniform, came in and approached me about what I said at the last board meeting. Scott challenged me as to what I said at that meeting on June fifteenth, 2015. I said, I spoke to somebody on Smith Street about the incident, about garbage cans being overturned. People have spoken to me about such happenings and concerns before, so I started a neighborhood watch in our area after an article in the newspaper concerning the lack of police presence in Ross's Point. Chris Deuce, owner of the Lakeside Coffee Shop, and others were upset as well as my husband and I. Chris asked the conversation to leave. Gordon, my husband, and Chris said, stop and ask Scott to leave. I was most upset of the verbal attack, and I came home to take medicine so I would not get into a stress attack. Scott should not go into a place of business to attack the public who is concerned about the village's safety. The village board should have guidelines for public employees. I am not now concerned about further harassment. If it should again occur, I feel it would be necessary for me to go to another agency. This letter should be sent, put in spec, permanent personal folder. If she does not have one, one should be established. I believe Chris spoke with George Rivers that day, and I know he spoke also with Jean, and I know Chris has written a letter, and she spoke with me today, and she hopes that that letter will be ready.
Publicly.
Publicly, as to what happened in her establishment. Thank you. Also, a while back, we were having trouble with the chipper trucks, as you all are aware of, and nothing seemed to be able to be done about it. So Gordon and I were driving through Swanton one day, and the gateway to where the truckers go was open, usually no trespassing, but it was open because they wanted, they were looking for people to hire. So I said, fine, I'm going in. I went in, and I spoke to the supervisor there. It definitely can be controlled. She spoke to them. I gave you all, Carol made a copy for each one of you to have. If you have any comments from anyone, please call this person. And it is all Burlington Electric Department. The trains are right there. They dump the chippers there, and they're put on the train. I saw the whole process, and they said they had many complaints, and something can be done about it. And I hope that we will be able to continue through this board to see about.
What was the complaint?
And it has, the trucks have slowed down since I spoke to them.
They're going too fast, you're thinking?
They're going way too fast, yes. And they have slowed down. So they have spoken to, so it has helped. So how long is this going to last? I don't know. Maybe they'll have to be reminded periodically. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. At this time, Andrew.
Sir. Oh, boy. Well, I want to have cake tonight.
Have a present.
Oh, come on.
I feel like I'm sounding the old man.
Andrew, we want to thank you for your time and word. This is presented to Andrew K. Vinslet, recognition and appreciation for his dedicated service to the residents of Village of Ross's Point. A village trustee, 2014 to 2015, congratulations.
Thank you.
And we'll miss you.
Thank you. Not getting murdered yet.
And if you people do not know, this gentleman, he was appointed trustee in Andrew's place. Sure. My ancient name, just kidding. Joe Tredwell. All right. Anybody else in the public want to address the board? If not, you'll have a chance at the end of the meeting. Minutes of the previous meetings, June fifteenth, nineteenth, and twenty-second. It's a busy month.
Make a motion to accept regular meeting minutes of June fifteenth, special meeting minutes of June nineteenth, and special meeting minutes of June twenty-second.
Moved by trustee Martin, seconded by Mr. Tredwell. The trustee Tredwell. All those in favor, vote by usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Bills. They all got copies now.
We have two additions tonight. The first one is to U.S. Bank. The amount is two eighty-two sixty-eight. That's the lease payment on the copier. And the other one is NISIC monthly bill for seven thousand four seventy-sixty-two.
Brian, what's the Husqvarna cutoff saw we drive homes for nine thirty-five?
It's a new wheeled chop saw.
Was that the other one burned up?
Yes. It's the cylinder was scored in it and got too many hours on it.
Must be some saw for nine hundred bucks.
Yeah, it's a commercial cutoff saw that they use pretty much bi-weekly.
Something we've got in fire station like?
It's got a big wheel on it, carburetor, yeah. Cuts concrete, steel, cuts everything.
Any other questions? If not, is it a motion?
Make a motion to give a vote.
A motion by Joe Tredwell.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Martin. How can I get trustee on there yet? Any discussion? Again, no discussion. All those in favor, vote by usual sign of aye. For the opposed, motion carried. All right, correspondence.
The first letter I have is to Donna Boomeo. As you know, my family and I are relocated to California in August, therefore my last day working as a library page will be August first, 2015. Additionally, as we discussed, my last day of doing the cleaning of the library will be June first of 2015. It has been a great year. I've learned a lot and had a great time assisting you with the fun and educational programming the library provides. I look forward to visiting and seeing continued growth and use of the library in the next few years, and would love to help out as a volunteer during future summer reading programs. And this was from Sarah Diaz. She's the page over at the library.
Make a motion to accept her letter of resignation. Can we get a letter to her after?
Oh, yeah.
Moved by trustee Martin, seconded by trustee Tredwell. Is any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
The next item I have is Ross's Point Fire Department. Dear mayor and trustees, the Ross's Point Fire Department respectfully requests permission to apply for the 2015 Volunteer Fire Assistance Grant administered by the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation. The grant application is for three thousand eight hundred and twenty-five dollars and thirty-four cents for the purchase of two sets of firefighting turnout gear. This grant requires a match of fifty percent of the grant amount of the three thousand eight hundred and twenty-five thirty-four. The matching funds are available in the fire department budget, requiring no additional funding beyond current appropriations. Thank you for your attention to this request from Michael LeBlanc, fire chief.
Motion to allow for a grant.
Second. Moved by trustee Martin, seconded by trustee Ma. Is any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
The next item I have is the letter that Mrs. Hall gave me. Do you want me to read it, ma'am?
Go ahead.
Okay. Dear mayor, trustees, and village administrator, I am writing this letter to report observations from herself and another employee regarding an incident that occurred at Lakeside Coffee on Tuesday, June sixteenth, 2015. On this date, Shirley and Gordon Hall were in her shop along with their friend, and they were seated near the front of the store enjoying a meal together, the Halls and Mr. Miller, a regular customer, often coming in on a daily basis. On this day, police officer Scott Beshard came to the shop where all these customers were present, and he was dressing uniform. He did not come to the counter, but proceeded directly to where the Halls and Mr. Miller were seated. A conversation was initiated between them. After a moment, it was clear that the tone and volume of the exchange was heated and unfriendly. At that point, a customer had left the store, and they observed that two women sitting nearby were becoming uncomfortable with the situation. So she decided to intervene and interrupted the ongoing exchange between Mr. Officer Beshard and the Gordons. She told that this was the appropriate place to be having this conversation, and that were making customers and my staff uncomfortable. And she went on to say that this is her restaurant, and she would ask that they take it elsewhere. Let me see, at this point, Officer Beshard looked at her and did not say anything, and looked back at the Halls, and she went on about what took place. A few more sentences were exchanged between them, and then followed by him leaving the premises, her staff, and she could not hear the content of the conversation, but it was clearly unfriendly in nature. If you have any questions, please feel free to contact me. And she listed below the names of the individuals that were there, her staff. And this is from Chris Deuce, owner of Lakeside Coffee.
Thank you, Carol.
And then Mrs. Hall already took care of what she had.
Nothing else, Carol?
That's it.
Thank you. Report of mayor trustees. First of all, I want to express my sincere thanks to the Gilroys for the job that they did putting on the parade and fireworks this year. Again, I'll say my side comments, and it's not to get against the Gilroys because they busted their home, but what took place with them. And I can't say enough, this village was packed from end to end, and it was a beautiful parade. Second thing, amending mayor commissions. As you know, trustee Vinslet decided to leave us, so we had to replace him. So the commission that he was on, we just put Joe and Joe Tredwell in his place, and that streets and sidewalks, he's the second. On electrical systems, he's second. Flood control and storm sorcery. I got him and Ma, and I'll, who else would you put on flood control? He's chairman, planning a development, he's chairman. Civic Center and Parks and beautification Jay trees, he's second. In library, historian, and senior youth, the welcome center, he is chairman.
You can make a motion on that, please?
You'll have to. What are my appointments?
Okay.
Okay. Township or municipal board authorization, is this your shot, ours then?
What this says is a standard bank resolution. It's just allowing me to change the name of the deputy mayor on the signature accounts. I'm not going to read it because it's a three-page resolution.
I don't think it. All right, I need, it's a roll call, votes, I need a motion.
Make a motion, George.
Our son has changed the name to deputy mayor.
So it's going from Joe to Jean.
Correct.
Our motion made in the second roll call, vote trustee Martin.
Aye.
Trustee Ma.
Aye.
Trustee Tredwell.
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye. Okay. Amendment number one, the third-party custody agreement. What is this, Carol?
That's our son also.
Jay Plain National Bank is amending their third-party agreement, custody agreement with us for the soil agreement regards to the deposits. I believe they're, they are, they're switching something with manufactured MT&T bank. It's just a standardized thing, and it's just, it's just something we have to go through.
Now, would you motion to accept it?
Motion to accept it?
Second. Motion by trustee Martin, seconded by trustee Tredwell. Roll call, vote. Trustee Martin.
Aye.
Trustee Ma.
Aye.
Trustee Tredwell.
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye. Okay, discussion. The MUA will celebrate its eighty-fifth annual conference at the Crown Plaza in 101 Olympic Drive, Lake Plaza, September fifteenth through the eighteenth. Of course, you know that there's another one right after wanting me delegate, delegate to that, but is anybody interested in going?
Is that Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, or maybe Tuesday, Wednesday?
I don't have a calendar, probably, but I will.
That's for all three days, or can you just?
No, it's all three days. It's Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday.
Is that in September?
September.
John and I both have that.
I don't have that much time off, so if only two days, I'd be able to get that off and go.
Anyway.
It's a good interesting trip.
Jean and Ellen, I think, will be going, if she's up to it. Any other motion?
Make the motion to allow, were you, were you going to go? Were you looking for?
Yeah. And, okay, we'll get to the next one then.
Two people go to the meeting?
Second.
Moved by trustee Tredwell, seconded by trustee Martin. All of those in favor, vote by usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. And the next thing, the resolution as delegate for the M U A meeting, which is unfortunately me. I need a motion to that.
It's roll call.
Well, I haven't got that far yet.
And it's Ron E.
Make a motion for George to be able to turn the U A.
Second. Moved by trustee Ma, seconded by trustee Martin. Roll call, vote. Trustee Martin.
Aye.
Trustee Ma.
Aye.
Trustee Tredwell.
Aye.
And I vote aye. Keep going, Mr. E. I've got an update on the, if you people haven't noticed, or people haven't noticed, in front of the village office, there's two electric car charging stations. The power authority in New York, of the state of New York, gave them to us free, and they're set to go. We're trying to get the press to do a press release. I called them a week ago, they had no response. But they're there, and it's a dollar an hour, and the board has to approve that. It's a dollar an hour to use it. Somebody?
Dollar per kilowatt?
No, dollar an hour.
Dollar an hour?
Yeah.
How long does it take to charge a car?
Anywhere from three to five hours.
I see.
How much power will that take in an hour's time, George? More than a dollar?
I haven't got a clue.
Well, before, we should do a test on that first before we actually, cost the board to run it for the three hours.
I think it was, it was a dollar per kilowatt.
Hour.
That's the way I read it.
That's awesome, too.
Not an hour, it was a kilowatt hour.
It could be either way. Either way, some people charge by hour, and I think we sat down and discussed, our son and I, and he said, you know, if you charge them for a kilowatt, and they used, in an hour, they used five kilowatts. Is that what you're thinking?
Well, I don't know. I don't know electricity that way.
Because it hasn't not, it has not been officially set.
What did it cost to put them in?
What?
What did it cost to put them in?
Something.
Wire, thirty, I'm certain to it. That's it.
Twenty-five dollars, fifty dollars?
I don't, haven't got a clue that it.
Is this something that we can change the price on if we find that?
Yeah, we just have to call the company. We just have to call the company. The way this crazy thing works, you got to have a smartphone. And there's one of them, whatever they call them, off in each phone, and they're dedicated to each unit. So if you're using unit two, you put your smartphone on it, they, and then you push whatever you have to do to contact the company out of California, we were off, right? And they turn it on. And when it's finished, it's charged to their credit card, and we're set to money.
Would have a big demand for that in the village?
No, no, we don't. But you know what? Riley Ford's got one, and Truss Jumper's got two down there in their parking lot, and they charge nothing. Right?
Does anybody use them that you know of?
No, we just put them in.
They just got, yeah, they just got.
And I doubt that they'll be used, but.
They're open to use. I have, I have three, four cars, John, you probably have some.
But George, the way you're making it sound is like it's very cheap, but in fact, it's the highest we can charge, correct, the dollar?
Yes.
Okay, just to clarify that.
But don't forget, we're only paying a cent and a half a kilowatt.
I know, but I'm sure it's more than a dollar an hour. It was a million.
Is that what they charge us on their electric bill, a cent and a half a kilowatt?
Power Authority charges that, but supplemental power's a little bit different.
Oh, okay. So you're boosting it, George, huh?
No, we're not boosting anything. We're just getting our money back.
Okay, George.
You guys got, you guys got to e-connect, you got to e-connect a handout that we were discussing at the last board meeting, and I believe the maximum rate, I don't have mine copied with it, but I think that maximum rate, I think, was a dollar fifty an hour.
Maximum rate, a dollar fifty an hour, not kilowatt?
Yes.
Our son and I went over that whole thing.
Most places were going by the hour instead of the kilowatt. It only, it's like, it's only like two or three kilowatts an hour or something with these cars do or something, according to this.
Only reason I have is if, you know, it's going to cost us three dollars an hour, we're going to make a dollar.
And they're going to, and what it costs us is what they use in power, which is cent and a half kilowatt, or whatever we pay ours then.
We add in incremental. I think they got it now. So they're paying with their credit card for the actual power?
Yeah.
And we're, and we're going to get a dollar an hour just for?
No, that's what we're charging. We're going to get what, if they have a five hours on there, we get five dollars. We're going to get, what, if they have a five hours on there, we get five dollars.
So by the hour?
I think, I'll tell you, this whole thing is vague. I have called the power authority and asked them to send me a press release on it. That was a week ago, I haven't heard a word. So tomorrow I may.
Hopefully by the next meeting, the next couple meetings, somebody, somebody will have used it and will know if you get anything back and how, how much it is.
If it takes them five hours to charge a car, hopefully they're going to some of the local shops.
Well, the other thing you got to understand, like Joe said, he's got two or three boards that come down. The electric cars now can get up to seventy miles on a charge. So if you got people coming from under all, that's only fifty. But they sure now need a charge to get back.
Well, the ones that I have, they just plug into the regular outlet at the marina. But I think this is designed for somebody.
Electric car?
Yeah. I think this is designed for somebody traveling that doesn't have any place to plug.
Like I said, I'm the guy who's not traveling.
Of course they could, because they could be going someplace shopping and there's an opportunity, but the key is, is wanting to know that it's there, I guess, like, you know, a little bit of, you know, pressure.
Well, myself, I think it's in a bad spot. I mean, especially at the village, I mean, if it was in the parking lot here, you know?
It's at the village so we can keep an eye on it.
We'll try it and just see how it all works. See if it pays, see if it doesn't pay, but.
I mean, you got a lot of cars that park in the front of the village office.
They won't be able to park there anymore.
Well, I guess, apparently not.
At least two slots.
All right.
Make a motion to allow.
No, it's just an update.
Yeah, let's wait for an update.
Wait for an update?
Yeah. Okay. Budget modification. Arsène? What are we doing?
I was asked to prepare a resolution to move monies that were unspent in the police budget last fiscal year to this fiscal year, and to move nine thousand dollars from the fire department budget to the police department budget for personal services. So under the general fund, your net result, we're going to increase appropriated fund balance fifteen thousand two twenty-six. Count nine sixty, increase appropriations fifteen thousand two twenty-six. In the water fund, we are going to decrease appropriations five ninety-nine point zero four or six thirty-six. Count nine sixty point zero four, decrease appropriated fund balance six thirty-six. In the sewer fund, we're going to de-